Reconvening to open session. Madam City Attorney, report out on closed session items, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council met in closed session pursuant to government code section 54956.9 D2 or D3 and E1 because there is a significant exposure to litigation in three cases. On one of the items which involved interpretation of the current development agreement on a property known as Perry Street property, the council authorized a settlement. A copy of the settlement agreement will be available in the city clerk's office as soon as it's fully executed. On another item, there was no reportable action taken, and actually, the third item was never taken up. The council met pursuant to government code section 54956.91 to confer regarding the matter of Camp Carson versus City of Carson, case number 20STCV16461. There was no reportable action. And lastly, the council met pursuant to government code section 54956.94 because the city is considering whether to initiate litigation in one potential case, and the council authorized the litigation to commence. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Introductions. I have a report from our Captain Jones of the Carson Sheriff's Station.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I got it. Can you hear me?
Greetings.
Hi, there.
Hello. Hello, Madam Mayor. To rest the council, the city manager and his entire staff. I have a small report on some of the things that have been occurred with the Carson Sheriff's Station since our last meeting. As you know, Rare Ribbon Week was a couple of weeks ago, so we had several Rare Ribbon Week events that we attended throughout the city. We're able to connect and share some information with some of the students, as well as even just community members on making sure we stomp out and get people to be aware of the substance abuse and how to overcome it, as well as to keep our kids safe away from the harmful drugs. We hosted our trunk-or-treat event in partnership with the city. It was a very good event. We had it out front here on Desford. We had very good attendance. A lot of the kids came out with some spooky, some fun, but a lot of good costumes. So, we're just able to, happy to be out and partner with the community, the city, and do that event for the community. Our traffic office has been doing a lot of traffic enforcement operations. Our most recent one was down in the South City off of Main and Sepulveda. At that event, they did 20 traffic stops where they conducted. There were 17 drivers who they cited with hazardous citations. And just know, we will be doing some additional enforcement operations in the North City off of Avalon, off of Central, and we're also going to be doing one off of Santa Fe to make sure we ensure people aren't speeding or no one gets hurt to dangerous driving. This upcoming weekend, we will be joining and supporting the Veterans Day celebration that the city will be having. And then, we've been making a big push over the last three months to share with the community and get the word out on the importance of the role that they play in reducing preventable crimes. So, one thing I want to just make sure, remind our staff, our folks out there, as we know, it's holiday season, the shopping has begun. Just remember all those holiday safety tips when you're shopping online. If you will be gone on vacation, feel free to call us at the station. The number is 310-830-1123 and request a vacation or a patrol check. It's free, it doesn't cost anything, just give us your information. Let us know the days you will be gone, if there is a car that's going to be in a driveway or something of that nature. And then, we just want to remind everyone of the campaign that we've been pushing with our 9:00 PM routine check, and that's just to make sure, remove your phone, remove any valuables, remove your jewelry, your keys, your money, or anything from your cars, you know, at night. Make sure you lock your car. We're finding folks are forgetting to lock their vehicles. Make sure you lock your car. If you have a porch light, a rear light, please turn on those lights. Lock all your doors and windows. If you have a garage door, make sure that the garage door is down. A lot of times, people go inside the house, they never, and they're going back and forth, and they forget to let the garage door down. So, make sure your garage door is down. If you have some type of side gate or a back gate, make sure it's secured and locked. And then, if you have an alarm, make sure you set the alarm on your vehicle as well as on your home. Just know, we will continue to educate our community on any type of safety tips. You can find additional crime prevention information on our social media platforms. So, on Instagram, that's @LASDCarson. For Meta or Facebook, that's @CarsonSheriffStation. And then, for Twitter or X, that's @CarsonLASD. That concludes my report for this evening. Does anyone have any questions with me?
Thank you, Captain. Any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman.
Not really a question, but thank you for supporting Rare Ribbon Week. That message to the young people of our community is really important every year. And when we have a group of students that are so enthusiastic and active about getting that message out to their peers, you know, they listen to their peers more than they listen to the adults. As a classroom school teacher, I know that's the case. And I know you've talked with many young people in the community, and we appreciate your active involvement, your hands-on style of being a captain. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the support.
Councilwoman? Any comments?
Yes, thank you for everything that your station does and also in educating our students. And then, thank you for the holiday reminders. Lock it, hide it, keep it, I think, is what we all need to remind ourselves every night. So, thank you for that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next, we have a report from the Fire Department Station. How are you?
I'm great, thank you.
Good.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members and staff. I'm here on behalf of Los Angeles County Fire Department representing Brian Bennett tonight. He couldn't make it, the Assistant Fire Chief. So, I'm handling the battalion for today. My name is Martin Maher, and I'm just going to give you a rundown on the stats for October of what we responded to. My name is Martin Maher and I'm just going to give you a rundown on the stats for October of what we responded to. In, so in October, we went on one, we have 23 reported fires. We went on 641 rescues and emergencies. Three hazardous conditions, seven service calls, and they're not real specific on what they are. 234 good intent calls. These are calls where the public may have called something in, you know, maybe somebody sleeping or a public assist or something like that. We went on 22 false alarms and we went on eight specialty or special incidents. And that's all I have for the month of October. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Well, thank you for coming out.
You're welcome.
Any questions for my colleagues?
I do have one, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
22 false alarms and how does, can you tell us a little bit about why these are occurring?
So a lot of times, so those are most likely fire alarm calls where it's like you have a business where it has a fire alarm system and you might get a surge of the water pressure and so that'll trigger a fire alarm response. Then you will go out and as they're responding, usually as they're responding, you'll get a reset from the alarm company. They'll acknowledge that this was a false alarm. They have the technology to acknowledge that this was just a water surge typically. Sometimes they make it all the way out there and then they realize that, oh, the system was malfunctioning. So then they, the fire captain will put the building on test, we call it, until it's repaired.
I see. Okay.
So it's a false alarm.
Thank you for the explanation.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Councilman MP T. Hilton has a question.
Yes, I'm so sorry to come in on the telling it. There was a gas-like smell last week that was between the 91 freeway, on both sides of the 91 freeway. Residents said they smelled gas. I smelled gas. I smelled it like 3:00 o'clock in the morning, came back home, smelt it, called the gas company, and she said it was a gas-like smell. The Fire Department was working on it. Do you have any information on that?
I don't have information on that, but we go on a ton of those just because they're local refineries. If you have the onshore wind coming, it may, you may have actually had a gas leak and it just blows it. But the good thing about gas like methane is just, it just wants to get out and go and it's very difficult to get it going. You have to have it really concentrated in order to be in an explosive atmosphere. And so that's the good thing to know about it is, you know, when you smell gas, people think, oh, it's going to explode. Well, that's not necessarily the case, so. But in that instance, I don't have the specifics on it. It could have just been a plume that just kind of came by from a different source. Could have been from a refinery, but I don't have the specifics, so.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask my colleagues to join me at the podium for our presentations. Thank you. Thank you. How's everybody doing? Good, good. We're going to have a presentation by Councilman Hilton. National Diabetes Awareness Month.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm going to ask Lisa Castle from Partners in Care Foundation, a nonprofit that has provided diabetes prevention classes for our seniors. Thank you, Ms. Lisa, for, Linda, Linda, Linda. Thank you, Ms. Linda, for donating your time tonight.
My classmate here.
Oh, wow. You want to read it to your classmate?
Hello. No, you're presenting. How are you? Washington General.
No, no, you get it. Here's a proclamation recognizing October 28, 2023 as National Diabetes Awareness Month. Whereas an estimated 37 million Americans have diabetes, which is 11.3% of the US population, and another 96 million Americans have pre-diabetes and are at risk of developing type 2 diabetes. And whereas an estimated 8.5 million Americans who have diabetes, which is 38% of people with diabetes, do not know that they have the disease and may experience damage to their heart, eyes, kidneys, and limbs without producing any symptoms. And whereas type 1 diabetes affecting 5% to 10% of all adults and is characterized as an insulin deficiency occurring when the immune system attacks and destroys the insulin-producing beta cells of the pancreas. And whereas type 2 diabetes, the most common form account for approximately 90% to 95% of all diagnosed cases of diabetes. It is characterized by a rising blood glucose sugar level in the body resulting in the body's misuse of insulin. And whereas in the last 20 years, the number of adults diagnosed with diabetes have more than doubled as American population has aged and become more overweight or obese. Whereas the seriousness of diabetes is often underestimated because diabetes is rarely listed as a cause of death, but rather the complications caused by diabetes are listed instead. Whereas diabetes can lead to increased risks of heart attack, stroke, kidney failure, amputation, and advanced diabetic, greatly increasing the risk of severe vision loss as well as nerve damage. And whereas a healthy lifestyle is important for individuals, diabetes includes exercising, not smoking, and maintaining a balanced diet of proper insulin levels. And whereas Diabetes Awareness Month is an opportunity to increase awareness, risk factors, and symptoms of diabetes and the importance of healthy lifestyles and diabetic prevention. Now therefore, the Mayor and the City Council of Carson, California do hereby proclaim the month of November as National Diabetes Awareness Month in the City of Carson and remind our citizens of the vital importance of eating healthy and support educational programs to help fight against developing diabetes. Dated this day, attested by our city clerk, Dr. Kalia Bradshaw, on the 7th day of November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Linda, you want to say something?
It's a pleasure for our organization to do. It's a pleasure for partners to do the workshops that we do in Carson. We have a large turnout each time we present a workshop and thank the residents for participating and getting the education.
And once a general, always a general. Thank you. On October 9th, we presented what was a fabulous, outstanding, It's All About Me Women's Health Conference. And I always say to my supporters and the staff that's working on these conferences, the true test of someone that's a leader is how events run when they're not there. I was not able to attend all of the workshops. I was not able to attend the last couple of meetings. But I want everyone sitting here tonight to know that this All About Me Women's Health Conference, year number nine, was the best ever. What's the best ever? I had put in the atmosphere that I wanted 600 ladies to attend this conference. And my senior, I call her my chief of staff, she started panicking about a month out. I said, "Let me know what you have right now after the registration." The pre-registration had ended. She says, "Oh, we only have about three." And I said, "Don't worry about it. You'll get them." She said, "Really? Well, I think we need to come up with a way to give these tickets away." I said, "You don't worry about it. That's my barometer there." But I just wanted to let you know that I could not have done this without the support of the Diamond Lee Institute and Torrance Memorial Hospital. They were so awesome. This year, for the first time, we added a new component to the women's conference. It was for young people. And I was kind of concerned about that and my attorney here said, "Don't worry about it. I got you." For the first time, we had over 250 young women in attendance. For the first time. Adrian, come on up. She knows I love her dearly. But she came to the table and she said, "We're going to do this." She bused the kids in from Cal State Dominguez Hills. She bused them in from Compton. The meals were paid for by the Diamond Lee Institute and I'm going to bring you up later in a few minutes to take a photo, doctor. And this is what we call partnerships. Because when I reached out and we started talking about doing things with Cal State Dominguez Hills that had never been done before. We have a partnership. We have a partnership with the Small Business Academy, which we'll get to later. But this is what you, when you have a university in your city, you're supposed to be joined at the hip. And I wanted to say, under the leadership of Dr. Parham and the wonderful staff that we have at the university now, is, "Mayor, let me know what you want. Let me know how we can better serve the City of Carson because we're one of the few cities that have a university in our city." And I wanted to spin off of that and say, "Hey, it's the Cal State University Dominguez Hills in the City of Carson, not Dominguez Hills. It's in the City of Carson." I got to keep reminding them, "It's in the City of Carson, okay?" And I've been pushing that for the longest, "It's in the City of Carson." But Adrian, the nonprofit that we work with, we had over 50 ladies planning this conference. And I just want to let you know personally how much I appreciate you. We started meeting in March or January. It was early, in January. Came to the table and started meeting and mapping this program out. It would not have been as successful as it was without you and Cal State University Dominguez Hills. And I want to let you know how much I appreciate you. I wanted to let her know that in my absence, she said, "Don't worry, Mayor. We got you. We got you." And that meant a lot to me. 750 attendees at our ninth annual It's All About Me Women's Health Conference and Business Expo. Thank you so much. And this is presented to you, Adrian Macklin, in appreciation for your invaluable contribution to ensure the success of the first-ever young women's addition in the City of Carson's ninth annual Women's Health Conference and Business Expo. Thank you for securing the speakers for this worthwhile endeavor. I didn't even have to get speakers. That is amazing. She received all, she secured all the speakers, the young ladies. We put the flyers out. She did what she was supposed to do. It's dated to date November 7, 2023, assigned by your Mayor, Lula Davis-Holmes, our Mayor, Portem Jawan Hilton, Councilmember Cedric Hicks, Councilmember Jim Dear, and our Councilwoman, Arlene Bucatia-Rojas. I think you have a gift certificate that you received earlier. I want you to be relaxed. I want her to go and just reflect upon all the wonderful work that she did in putting this on. So we're going to do a day at Burke Williams Spa.
Just my thing.
Madam Mayor, can I just give her her props? This is Judge Attorney Adrian Macklin. She's also the president of the Diamond Lee Institute of the Board. She's the outgoing president. Have they made the transition? But I served with her on the Diamond Lee Institute Board, the honorable judge.
I just called her my friend. You guys give her all those titles.
Always call me your attorney from my days in the city. I really want to thank you for extending yourself and the City of Carson to the Diamond Lee Institute and Cal State Dominguez Hills. It was a vision that the institute had to have a women's conference. And when we thought about it, we said, "Why don't we pool our resources with the city? Because they have such a wonderful women's conference already and add a new component because our mayor has been asking to have young women attend the conference." So it was my distinct honor and pleasure to provide whatever services were necessary to make this happen. So thank you.
And thank you again. Just, can we have Dr. Samad and, come on down. Oh, that's all you're doing? Okay, I just checked. Dr. Samad, come on down. And I want you to stay because I want to photo with my next recipient later on. After I give her hers, then I'll call you back up. The next person that I'm going to introduce to you, I don't know what I would have done without her. When I tell you this woman has a can-do attitude, I'm going to make it happen. When everybody else fell short or they pulled out or did whatever. And I met her when I did the eighth, when All About Me Women's Expo. And I called. I don't know how I ran into her. I don't know what happened. But I only had about six doctors 30, about 30 days, two months before the conference. And I hooked up with her and I said, "I need some doctors." Because there is no conference without doctors. And these doctors rearranged their schedules, all of their appointments, to come and do this conference because they'd been hearing about it. Mary Ford, come on down. Mary Ford, you know, you just can't say enough. Six weeks before the conference last year, she said, "What do you need?" Now, doctors have their schedules lined out months ahead of time. But she was months, sometimes years. And she said, "What do you need?" I said, "I only have six doctors. I have eight sessions and I would like to have two doctors in each session." That was my goal. Because, well, that wasn't my goal. I said, asked for one, that the eighth. I said, "Just give me one. Just give me one to fill up these sessions." When the day of the conference came, I had a waiting list of doctors that wanted to participate in the Women's Health Conference because they had heard about it. Each session had two medical doctors. Two medical doctors in each one of the sessions. And it was just fantastic, went over rave reviews. "How did you do this when these doctors have schedule?" Well, when she says, "I need you," they respond. It's always good to have someone like Mary on your side. And so when we started planning this year, I called Mary again. And there is a waiting list of doctors that want to get in. I said, "Mary, I can't. We can't." I said, "Tell them next year. Tell them for the 10th. We have a waiting list of medical doctors." And I've had people that want to be medical doctors. I know, because our conference is for medical doctors only. Someone tried to encourage me. No, because when you sit in a room, you want to hear from the medical doctors, not the ones that are studying to become. Because this is very important information that we're giving out to our attendees. And this woman, when I called and one doctor said, "Oh, Mary Ford called. What can we say?" A waiting list. We had 16 doctors. It was eight sessions, 16 doctors. Six or nine panelists, all MDs at our Women's Health Conference. And I just want to say thank you so much. And also the women's, and they had six medical doctors also. Yo-Yo was our emcee for that event, one of our own, so I want to thank you. But I just want to let you know how much I appreciate you. And as long as I'm doing the Women's Health Conference, you will be. And as long as I'm doing the Women's Health Conference, you will be called in January. She says that I'm in. So, this certificate is presented to you, Mary Ford. She's from Torrance Memorial Hospital, folks. In sincere appreciation of your invaluable contribution to ensure the success of the city of Carson's Ninth Annual Women's Health Conference and Business Expo, securing speakers for this event, which would not have happened without you, with sincerest gratitude towards all the support in building products for our community, and most especially, this worthwhile endeavor. It's dated today, November 7th, signed by your mayor, Lula Davis-Homes, Mayor Protem Jawan Hilton, council member Cedric Hicks, council member Jim Dear, and Arlene Bogatia Rojas. And you have a day at the spa also, so we are all, I want us all to meet up and hang out at the spa, because I want to get you ready for the 10th annual. So, we have to bribe you. I know you are. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say, "Thank you from the bottom of my heart for inviting me and getting on board." When I first heard of you and was like, "Well, what is this all about?" And then, that's just my passion, to make sure that we're healthy, that we extend our lives, and so these doctors know. And it's hard for them to say no to me. And so, even people at work, like, "How do you get that?" It's just, if you don't ask, you don't get. You know? There's two answers, yes or no. So, you move on, you know? But I do have, as the mayor said, I have doctors now calling and like, "I heard about it," you know? And others, when they walked on the grounds, they was like, they didn't even know what was happening. But now, they're like, "Can we do it again next year?" And I go, "Well, that depends on the topic," you know? But it was amazing, and the youth, oh! I, I do have doctors too now. Now, they're rethinking their topics, you know? And like, "We're in, and now we have others." But such a joy and a pleasure to know you. And she's my mayor too, so maybe Torrance Memorial, but we are partners for life, okay? So, oh, yes. And this was the first time ever, and because I met her and knew her, I went back and I went straight to the CEO. I said, "We need to do a feature on this lady." And they're like, "What lady?" You know? And I said, "The mayor of Carson." I said, "Mayor Lula Davis, we must get..." And everybody was like, "Well, who is she?" And I said, "You'll find out when we get her an interview." And so, the CEO said, "Okay, Mary, you're so adamant about this. Okay, let's make it happen." So, we did, you know? Photo shoot and everything, and she end up in our magazine, that first time ever woman of color in our magazine that goes to all these homes. So, oh, I'm so proud. I'm so proud. I'm so proud, so proud. So, there'll be more too. That's just the beginning.
Oh, ooh, I'll take that. I'm receiving it. The magazine went everywhere, all, it's everywhere, and it was, the conference was advertised in the magazine. 300,000 homes, wow. And I was just honored to be a part of that full-page, two-page act, talking about the Women's Health Conference, my vision. Basically said, "I love my community." That's what it was all about. And she made that happen. First time an African-American female has been in that magazine. That's saying a lot, after all of these years. It's called the Pulse Magazine. I do have some on my desk, by the way. So, a 100-year-old hospital, what is that saying? Wow. Thank you very much, and we'll see you in January, the two of you. Let me take her picture, and then we're gonna call Mary. And we want to take one with the two of you. Yes. Awesome, awesome. Love you more. Thank you so much. Councilwoman, you had a certificate that wasn't listed. You want to do it now?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much. So, I would like to call up Registered Nurse Don Marie Morales Tumagan. Yes, thank you. And I have two, but I'll, I'll call one at a time. And thank you so much. Yes, let me read this. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you. So, you could stand right here. Okay, so, this is National Prematurity Awareness Month. Whereas the city of Carson recognizes and honors the month of November as Prematurity Awareness Month. On this occasion, it is appropriate to raise awareness by recognizing the prevalence of premature births and the impact that it has on our communities around the world. And whereas about 15 million babies around the world are born premature each year, and more than 1 million of them do not survive their early birth. Whereas premature birth is the leading cause of newborn death in the United States, particularly babies born to black women. In the U.S., black babies are more than one and a half times as likely to be born too early compared to babies born to white women. The preterm birth rate for black infants was 16.8% compared to the national average of 11.7%. Whereas the March of Dimes, the leading nonprofit organization for pregnancy and baby health, is committed to finding solutions to the problems that threaten babies. Since 2003, the March of Dimes has led Prematurity Awareness Month activities in November as part of its prematurity campaign. The March of Dimes achieved a major campaign milestone when the PREMI Act was signed into law in December 2006. Congress approval of the measure afforded expanded research, education, and services pertaining to the growing problem of premature birth. Since then, March of Dimes has advocated for increased appropriations of federal agencies for premature-related research. And whereas prematurity awareness month events are scheduled nationwide during November, prominent buildings and landmarks in several states, including the Empire State Building in New York City, will be shining in purple light to symbolize hope for a healthy start for more babies. Whereas the city of Carson values the importance of educating the community in order to create a more inclusive environment for our proudly diverse neighborhoods. Understanding the diverse narratives that make up our neighborhoods and uplifting the people that live in them is a value held with utmost importance. On World Prematurity Day, November 17th, the city requires that you light up your office, lobby home, or the outside of your workplace, purple or wear purple to show your support in the fight for the healthy, the health of every mom and every baby in communities like ours and across the country. It is now, therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Carson proclaim the month of November 2023 as Prematurity Awareness Month, and calls upon the citizens of Carson to recognize and celebrate its importance with appropriate ceremonies, programs, and activities. It's dated the 7th day of November, signed by our mayor and city council. And thank you. She is a registered nurse, and thank you so much. I know that you are a part of the NICU unit. Yes, so thank you so much, Don Marie Morales Tumagan. And please say a couple of words.
It's not easy being a nurse. It's times like these where you get recognized and appreciated is where we come back and, you know, stabilizing patients and taking them home is our goal. So, just educate yourselves and always know that there's resources out there, online or in your local city hall. So, I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you. And what hospital are you at?
Harbor.
All right. Harbor UCLA in the city of Carson. Thank you so much.
And to support this month, when you leave city hall tonight, the fountain is purple. Purple. We made sure that it'll be purple for the rest of the month to support this, so that the city support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I have another, just, it's right there, and we'll take, we'll take one together. So, I have another physician, Dr. Lynn Smith. Is Dr. Lynn Smith, yes, thank you so much. And you are also at UCLA Medical Center and the NICU unit? Yes, thank you so much. And congratulations. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for highlighting Prematurity Awareness Month. Thank you for showing your purple. We really appreciate it. It's not easy being a NICU nurse. She has to deal with neonatologists like me. And they just care for the babies with such great care. And I just, as the chair of the department of Pediatrics at Harbor UCLA, I just want to say, "It is an extraordinary honor to serve the children and the families in the city of Carson." Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you.
Just a second. Mary Ford, doctor. We start early. Thank you. The next, we have a certificate, Councilman Dear, Indigenous Peoples Month.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like Joseph Pignone to come forward, and I'm gonna read this proclamation. So, Joseph is a Carson resident, and he is an American Indian, mother and father both. And I'm a history teacher, so we have to recognize that there were many people, there were millions of people in the Americas before the Europeans, Africans, and Asians came here to colonize this hemisphere. And so, so often in history, the indigenous people are overlooked, forgotten, disrespected, dishonored, and we need to reevaluate, kind of bring our country to a recognition of, we must, must know the true history of our nation. And so, the city of Carson is going to be one of the cities to be in the forefront of doing that. Many of you don't know that the nations of Native Americans, many nations existed. And our constitution, our Declaration of Independence, is influenced by the Confederation of the Iroquois Nations. And they were very organized. They taught us about, believe it or not, democracy. And so, we recognize those contributions with this proclamation, and recognize in the month of November, every year, as Indigenous Peoples Month. Whereas, the month of November is a time to celebrate rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories, and to acknowledge the important contributions of indigenous people. And whereas, the early inhabitants of this great land, the indigenous people of North America, played a unique role in shaping our nation's history and culture. And whereas, during the month of November, when we celebrate Thanksgiving, we especially celebrate the heritage and contributions of indigenous people of this nation. And whereas, Indigenous Peoples Month is an opportune time to educate the general public, especially our children, about tribes, to raise general awareness about unique challenges indigenous people have faced, both historically and in the present, as the ways in which tribal citizens have worked to conquer these challenges. Whereas, since the nation's birth, pluralism and diversity have been hallmarks of America, the American experience and success. And in the year 1782, the founding fathers chose as a national motto, "I Pluris Unum", which means, "Out of many, won." Whereas today, America's unity derived from a mix of many diverse cultures and people grandly embodies the vision expressed by our founders. Indigenous cultures have made remarkable contributions to our national identity. Their unique spiritual, artistic, and literary contributions, together with their vibrant customs, celebrations, enliven and enrich our land. Whereas, as we move into the 21st century, indigenous people will play a vital role in maintaining our nation's strength and prosperity. Almost half of America's indigenous tribal leaders have served in the United States Armed Forces, following in the footsteps of their forebears, who distinguished themselves during the World Wars and the conflicts in Korea, Vietnam, and the Persian Gulf. Matter of fact, during World War II, it was Native American speakers, primarily Navajo, who were able to keep the American sailors, Marines, soldiers safe from the Japanese, because they could speak in a language the Japanese could not decipher when it was put into code. It had to do with how the language is spoken. You can have one word, it could be said many different ways, the same word, and means many different things. So, that was a example, one of many thousands of examples of the bravery and the contributions that Native Americans made to our armed forces, and therefore, our freedom and our liberty as a country. As we move into the 21st century, indigenous people will play a vital role, oh, I, I read that, I'm sorry. Whereas, their patriotism again appeared after the September 11 attacks on our nation, as indigenous law enforcement officers volunteered to serve in air marshal programs. On the local level, indigenous people are strengthening their communities through education and business development, opening the doors to opportunity, and contributing to a brighter future for all. And whereas, during Indigenous Peoples Month, we call on the community to learn more about the history and heritage of the indigenous peoples of this great land. Such actions reaffirm our appreciation and respect for their traditions and way of life, and to preserve an important part of our culture for generations yet to come. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of Carson, California hereby proclaim the month of November as Indigenous Peoples Month, and call upon our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and to educate ourselves about the truth. This is dated the 7th day of November 2023, and I'd like to again introduce Joseph Pignone, again, a Carson resident. He can tell you a little bit about his experience as a Native American, and tell us a little bit about history and, and culture. Thank you, Joseph.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Dear. My name is Joseph Pignone. I am a lifetime resident of the city of Carson, and I am Apache on my father's side, and Itumite on my mother's side. Thank you to the city council for recognizing Indigenous Peoples Month. For those who do not know, the indigenous people of what is now LA County and Ventura County were the Tongva Indians, also known as the Gabberlinos. And they have a very rich history and culture. Many places still have Tongva names, like, excuse, like, so, so, also in Signal Hill, some people do not know that the Tongva Indians on Signal Hill signaled the inhabitants of Catalina Island through signals. That's how Signal Hill gets its name. And they believe that the origin of the entire earth is a location on Cal State Long Beach's campus called Pavunga. There's a spring there, and they believe that the entire universe was created at that one point. So, that's a very cultural significant and religious significant land. And for the city of Carson, in South Carson, the largest inhabited village actually was called Suwanga, which means "place of the reeds." Carson, for much of its history, was a marsh-type of land. So, the largest village numbering, I think, close to 1,000 people were living in what is now South Carson.
There's a monument to that.
Yes, there is a monument, I believe the Watson Land Company built decades ago. Larger monument, a new monument, but ran into some roadblocks there. But I want to thank the city council again for recognizing Indigenous Peoples Month. And, everybody.
So, you're talking about streets like Kawanga, Topanga, those are indigenous names that we've learned. So, we're going to take a photograph here, and this is a proclamation like you to accept on behalf of the indigenous people of Carson. About 1% of our population is indigenous, and it's varied over the decades, but we do want you- but we do want you to receive this.
Thank you. We'll have Councilman Hicks. United, which one are you going to do? United Against Hate Week, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. One, two. Thank you, Madam Mayor, can you guys hear me? Testing, one, two, testing. I want to bring up Dr. Jared from Cal State University Dominguez Hills, representing the Conflict Management and Peacekeeping. How are you doing? Thank you. Oh, that's right, yeah, I'm not... Thank you, yeah. Can I... Sure, do you want to start out, we'll do it again, sure. Okay, okay, thank you. So, basically, the program's in the community. It's one of the top 10 programs in the country. It's a program on negotiation, conflict resolution, peacebuilding. We have amazing faculty, they do work, and students like Diego. We do amazing work in arbitration mediation, restorative practices, and transformative dialogue, you know, that's going on in the community around us. And it's because of the work of the faculty in this program and the students that, you know, I'm really humbled to be part of this because it's really a terrific program at our university and our community. And I just want to thank the council members and the mayor and the university for supporting this program. It's terrific, and I'm really pleased to be part of it. And I'm Canadian from Vancouver originally, by the way. I'm liking it here, okay. Thank you, I just wanted to recognize that LA Versus Hate, United Against Hate Week is actually November 12 through the 18th. And whereas, the dangers of hate, racism, and bigotry grows more apparent every day, and the need for local action could not be more urgent. And whereas, due to the rise in the hate crimes and bias incidents that pose a dangerous threat to the safety and citizenry of our neighborhoods, LA Versus Hate, United Against Hate Week, was created as a direct response. And LA Hate Versus Hate teams up with the community partners representing a diverse coalition of voices committed to ending hate. And whereas, we seek to join communities in the Californian cities across this country, the second annual LA Versus Hate Against Hate Week as an important step in bridging divisions and strengthening our communities. Now therefore, the Mayor and City Council of Carson, California, in collaboration with the Los Angeles County Commission on Human Relations, Cal State University Dominguez Hills Negotiation, Conflict, Resolution, and Peacebuilding Program do hereby proclaim its commitment to support of LA Versus Hate Against Hate Week in our community and the county, dated November 7, 2023. And the second recipient is from... The Commission on Human Relations from LA County, Mrs. Hernandez, come on up, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Arandita Hernandez, and I am a student at Cal State Los Angeles. I'm here tonight representing the LA Versus Hate Program. LA Versus Hate Program is a project of the LA County Commission of Human Relations. The Commission is one of the oldest civil rights agencies in the country devoted to promoting positive human relations in a racially diverse multicultural county. The LA Versus Hate Campaign aims to inspire people to stand up to hate by expressing solidarity and by reporting hate through 211 LA. The campaign helps victims of hate receive needed interventions through a team of professionals. For the fourth year, LA Versus Hate is hosting United Against Hate Week, a week of community-inspired innovative strategies to engage residents by offering art interventions, community events, digital resources, and creative opportunities to stand against hate. The goal is to promote respect and inclusion during the week. We ask community members to display artwork in businesses, homes, and schools to promote LA Versus Hate, United Against Hate Week, on digital platforms, and by holding events that inspire inclusivity and collaboration. Your city residents can get resources and toolkits to get involved at laversushate.org. We thank Carson for joining us in celebrating and participating in this supportive week, which promotes solidarity and welcome for all, and thank you.
Before, while she's standing up here taking photos, where are our council aides and all that? I want to recognize our photographer. And I'm going to let Councilman, who else is... I'm going to let Councilman Hicks read this, I'm so excited. I met this young, yes. I met this young lady in the, we started a small business academy, one of my outreach programs, and there were nine, about nine? About nine businesses, nine or 10 businesses that graduated from the Small Business Academy at Cal State University Dominguez Hills. This is one of my things that I wanted to do when I became mayor. And we're on our second class right now, and we want to recognize the small businesses that are here in the city of Carson. And I was so impressed with her photography, and we were looking for someone to come and take pictures for us at our events and things like that, and what better person? If you're going to say you support small business, you have to put your money where your mouth is. And so, this young lady has been taking our photos since she graduated from the Small Business Academy. And I want to give you an opportunity to say something.
Thank you, thank you so much, this is such a huge honor. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. I am, I just feel like it's, sorry, I'm like, I'm, you know, I'm just really excited, and I'm just super honored, and I... This opportunity has really given me the way to work, live, and play in Carson. Being able to have this opportunity to capture these wonderful moments for the city, it's just such a joy, and living in our city, and I love our city so much, and that we just play too. So, anyway, thank you so much, I really appreciate it. I'm Elizabeth, my company is Clivabeth Photography, and we capture generations that will last forever, and being able to capture the events and these moments for the city, just to know that they will live on historically for our city is so meaningful for us and our business. So I really appreciate Madam Mayor and the City Council for supporting small businesses and shopping local.
I just have one quick, the picture needs to be taken what's in front of us. Your family, everyone got a camera in their hand. Everybody has a camera in their...
Yes, thank you, somebody needs to take that photo of her family taking photos of mom. Okay, it says Small Business Saturday. Saturday, November 25, 2023, is Small Business Saturday, and the city of Carson, California celebrates the businesses, the contributions they make to our local community and economy. And whereas, Small Business Saturday was founded by American Express in 2010, in 2011, American Express and the Small Business Administration, yes, come up here, co-sponsored Small Business Saturday to support small businesses busiest shopping season. Small businesses is celebrated annually in November on the Saturday after Thanksgiving, a day before Black Friday, two days before Cyber Monday. And according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are nearly 32 million independent businesses in the nation in which we are encouraged to support, and all holiday seasons long. It is important that we support small businesses in the city of Carson as they need the support even more as a result of the effects of the coronavirus pandemic. And the city of Carson supports our local businesses that create employment opportunities and provide invaluable services to the community. Historically, spending among U.S. consumers reached an estimated $17.9 billion, according to American Express, in 2022 in Small Business Saturday Consumer Insights Survey. Therefore, the mayor and the City Council of Carson, California do hereby proclaim November 25 as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of the community and communities around the country to support small businesses on Small Business Saturday and throughout this year. So congratulations to you and your family, and we thank you for everything you do for the city of Carson, so thank you.
Sorry, I forgot, I definitely have to thank my family because they are the biggest and most amazing support system that allows me to capture all these events, so, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We just came off of our celebration of Red Ribbon Week, and I wanted to take a special time out to do a certificate of appreciation to Richard Bis. If you know anything about alcohol or drug awareness prevention in the city of Carson, you know Richard Bis. Richard, come on up. Come on up, come on up. He has always been a breath of fresh air, making sure that we get the word out to our young people in the community of being off of drugs, away from alcohol, and just preventive measures to live a lifestyle without the use of any type of drugs. So, Richard Bis, in appreciation of your 17 years of dedication and campaigning for alcohol and drug abuse prevention, your tireless efforts and contributions have enhanced our Carson community and our residents. Wishing you continued success in all your future endeavors dated today. Signed by Mayor Lou Davis Holmes, Mayor Protem Jawan Hilton, Councilman Jim Dear, Councilwoman Arlene Bogotia Rojas, and yours truly, Cedric Hicks. And I just want to say, you guys finished the red ribbon. If you noticed through the city, you saw ribbons that were all over the red ribbons, that was because of him and his volunteers and teams, and the young people in the community who came out who are in support of red ribbon, and to make a commitment to not go into using drugs. So I want to say thank you for doing that. People don't always say thank you, but I want to say from a grateful city, we want to thank you for what you've done for this community, thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank you, Councilman Hicks. 17 years of movement on our city called Red Ribbon Week. 17 years, everybody, in order to keep our community safe and to keep our youth away from drugs, you know, and this year brought me back to how it was before. Seven days of events all throughout the week. We, I think, on average, more than 70 people per event. So the community came together, our youth came out and volunteered, and just like Captain Damon Jones said, they were full of energy in what the message that we are getting out there. And I want to thank all the council members for coming to our events, for supporting us, for speaking even. So thank you, everybody, thank you, to everyone who's here for supporting Red Ribbon Week.
Mr. City Manager, item number 11, we're going to take over to the next council, Darren couldn't make it tonight. Item number 12 is the presentation of the 2019 California Parks and Recreation Society Award winner intergenerational program.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have our staff that's going to provide a presentation in regards to this, this item number, for item number 12. And so, we'll prepare that for you here briefly. This will be featuring Ms. Melody, Amanda, and I believe Danny as well. Or Danny's coming, she's... Oh, she's supporting, okay, so Amanda and Melody, great.
Oh, thank you so much, David. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you so much for having us. My name is Amanda Valerosi, I'm the Human Services Supervisor here at the city. And I oversee the senior programs. I've been here since, for almost 15 years now. And my background is that I'm a gerontologist, and it was all in senior services. But when I got hired at the city in human services, we have everything from preschool on up. And intergenerational programming is my favorite thing to do as far as the field of aging. So I was really excited to look for programming, and it took a while, but in 2015, Dani Cook, who was my coworker at the time, she's the manager now, and Mike Whittaker was our manager, we approached him with a documentary called Cyber Seniors. The documentary came with an option to buy into a program where you had the rights to screen the film and then use the program in your community. So we started that in 2015, and we collaborated with Rancho Dominguez Preparatory School. After that, we started running it every semester, and it's been an amazing, beautiful program. I still get excited about it every single semester. And Melody Carter now runs it, and I'm going to let her explain the rest to you, and there's a slideshow going too, so.
Since no one got to see it. Thank you, Amanda. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. So to continue, in 2017, I became part of the Human Services Team, and Ms. Amanda graciously passed me the IGP torch with a trusting heart and a watchful eye. To say I was intimidated would be an understatement. There were some pretty lofty successes I had to follow and uphold, but truth be told, this program has had my heart from day one. Coming from a health and wellness background, my first session focused on being healthy in mind and body. my first session focused on being healthy in mind and body by studying nutrition, doing Zumba, working out, and we even got on the floor and meditated. Over the years, we have rotated through various topics, including health and wellness, trading ages, personal histories, and more. In October of 2019, our then-human services manager, Mr. Michael Whitaker, thought our program deserved to be regionally recognized. He asked that we apply for the Creating Community Aging Well CPRS Award. We did, and we won. It was such an honor to be a... It was such an honor to be officially validated for what we already knew we were providing, a safe, exciting, and enriching union of generations, a bridging of the gap. Side note, the day before we were all supposed to walk across the stage to accept our much-deserved recognition in March 2020, the world shut down. But here we are, three years later, finally able to once again work with the incredible staff from Rancho Dominguez Prep. Mr. Louis Blazer here is the coordinator of the Rancho Dominguez Magnet Center for Law, Government, and Public Service, and he has helped us bring this program back to life. We reached out to the community through online marketing and mass emails, recruiting what I lovingly call our super seniors from the city of Carson. The response has been overwhelming. For this latest session, we recruited 10 super seniors to partner with 10 high school seniors. And through the IG program, we have helped them make indelible connections through games, histories, herstries, writings, and discussions. We have shared personal stories, joys, fears, and lots and lots of laughter as we learn about one another and realize that in our truest form, we really are more alike than different. Over the 200-plus connections that have been made, many of which last to this day, our super seniors still attend graduations and school functions of their IGP partners. Next week, we will celebrate our seniors and thank them for sharing their stories, for making memories and connections that will last a lifetime, and for trusting me and this amazing program to help bring them together and bridge the not-quite-as-large-as-we-might-think gap between two very diverse generations. I think we will all walk away with a renewed sense of discovery, some of faith and trust, and a little more understanding in the upcoming generations. While the younger generations, I think, may finally have to accept that we're really a lot cooler than they want to admit. Thank you.
That's right.
Thank you. Is that the trophy, a plaque for the CPRS?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, congratulations.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the staff for doing a wonderful job, to our director, our assistant, city manager guys are just keep making us proud. Thank you.
In spite of the pandemic.
Yes, to my colleagues, MPT.
I just wanted to, I saw Lionel Cook and you guys had an indelible imprint on his life. When he lost his wife, he came around and you kept him active. You kept him alive to the time he passed. What great joy. He bragged about this program. He loved this program. It was a part of his everyday life. And I want to appreciate you on behalf of the Cook family because they always talk about how this program helped their dad as his wife transitioned, and he just came and hung out and sang until he transitioned. So on behalf of the Cook family, I'm saying thank you because every time I see him, that's what they tell me. So I thought I'd pass the message on to you guys tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. That's what we do in Carson. We take care of our youth, our seniors, and anything in between. We take care of them. Next is a... Did anyone else want to say something? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Item number 13, recognition of a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. Wow. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We placed this on just so it could be brought to the attention to you, Madam Mayor and City Council. This is the highest award that a finance department can receive. And so it had been, it missed us, dodged us a couple times, but we were back on track. And so I just wanted to personally be able to thank our assistant, our deputy city manager, Tariq Rachmani, and then our new finance director and their wonderful team, Mr. Will Jefferson. To be able to receive this excellent award and just goes to show the excellence, obviously, your finances speak to that, Madam Mayor. And so I think this is just, again, fruits of the labor of the work that this great staff has done.
Awesome. Congratulations, staff. You know, we like these awards. Our finance manager. Tariq, job... Where are you, Tariq? He's over there somewhere. Job well done. Thank you. Is there an award that I need to see, or is this...
It's actually, it's online certificate, and there was a physical certificate, but we haven't received it yet. But we'll provide it to you, Madam Mayor, once it comes in.
I need to see something. Yes, please. Let's frame that certificate. Sure. It's the first time we received it, isn't it?
In a couple of years, yes, ma'am.
In a couple of years. Well, yeah, we need to frame this. Yeah, this is under our watch, so we want to see it. And the next one is item number 14, another certificate written, recognition of a Carson-winning 2023 Eagle Award from Prism. Who is that?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So this was an award, and I believe we have our wonderful risk management team led by our risk manager, Mr. Rubik Galuzian. He's here. There in the back.
Come on down.
Rubik, along with Desi. She's gonna, is our senior analyst in risk management. This is something that's become a tradition here in the city of Carson because we've never received this award until, was it a year or two ago? Last year was the first year, so this is the second year in a row under Rubik's watch and Desiree coming in, doing such a wonderful and fantastic job. They don't have a certificate necessarily, but they do have a physical award to show you, Madam Mayor and Council.
Well, thank you.
The recipient of this.
That's a nice one.
I want to see something.
They've got some jewelry to show for it, so. This is, but I'm going to allow them just to kind of speak briefly about what Prism is and how they were able to obtain the reward. But again, this is a second year in a row, and just goes to show, again, the excellent work that staff continues to put out day in and day out. And this is just another, an example of the fruits of their labor, so.
And it's going to be in our display case, I take it. Where's the first one?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Rubik, if you'd like to say a few words.
Is our insurance carrier. And basically speaking, they insure 48 counties in the state of California, including multiple cities, and for the second year in a row, they have recognized the work that we've done here in risk management department, in the risk management department. We basically created an interactive GIS claims map in an effort to kind of track and show you guys here at the city council as well as the public works department and anyone who needs to see where we have the most incidences that occur over the city when it comes to potholes or sidewalks. And so basically, to better help us kind of focus our resources on the most needed areas. So, again, and David, I would actually like to thank you because when you became city manager, you kind of supported Rubik's vision for the risk management department, and it kind of helped make it possible. And we would also like to thank you, Robert, because you also, you know, helped give us this idea. We also don't want to forget the GIS department, Alex Rocco and his intern Donald, because they took our vision and our work and they put it into action. So thank you, city council. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for recognizing us today.
Well, thank you. You know, we like awards now. I just want to be able to see them. I'm not going to just take staff's word for this. Okay, thank you. Job well done. Thank you so much, Rubik, for all you and your team do. Very much appreciate it. And we will have that displayed in our new trophy case. It's kind of, okay. Thank you so much. Job well done.
Excellent, guys. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, all communications on matters listed on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did receive one public comment card for an agenda item.
Okay. Angelica Prito? Are you going to read it, or what are we going to do?
She's here.
Oh, she's here?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, come on down, sweetie.
For item number 33.
Item number 33?
Hello, good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here again.
Angelica, you'll have three minutes.
I'm really happy that you guys took in consideration, you know, that what we, why I was here for our last time is about the issues of repairing the street, the other streets on South Carson. One of the ones that I consider that are the worst ones is Wellington Avenue by Sepulveda all the way to 33rd. Also Avalon, like the major streets, the bigger ones, are the ones that need more attention. So I urge you guys to please consider this, making this your priority. And Figueroa, also from Alameda all the way to Carson. Alameda is one of the ones that I think needs the most help of all. So like I said, thank you for making this a priority in Carson, and thank you, guys.
It is a priority. That's why it's on this agenda because I heard you the last time. So it's top priority. We need to bring our streets back to where they used to be, the best streets in the South Bay. And so that's what this is all about, is to make us... Who is our public works director? Give her a quick and dirty report. Seven months, eight months.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We want to remind the last speaker and the general public that the five of us had decided that since we have over $100 million in reserves, we're going to fix every single street and alley in the city of Carson. That's a commitment from the five of us. And it's about time we get Carson back up to the level of quality of infrastructure that we had, you know, 10 years plus ago. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for us for being bold. Councilman Hilton, Councilman Hicks, myself, and former Mayor Al Robles for having the nerve to put the money, these items on the ballot so that we can, could get $120 million. So that didn't happen overnight. We struggled with the $20 million surplus, which means you could only paint the building once. So we have 120 to clean up our infrastructure. Our parks are top priority in the city's infrastructure. That's top priority in the city of Carson to anyone listening. And thank you for coming and been supportive of this. But there are four contracts, item number 33, and we will make it happen. Okay? Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I also want to remind the public, I want to thank Councilwoman Rojas, Councilman Hilton, and myself, the three of us, for bringing the city manager onboard, David Roberts, replacing the city manager we had before. Because not until that happened did these great changes and these awards we're getting and the great staff we have today, that's taking place because of the three of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dear. The city manager couldn't do anything without money. The money is a fruit of all evil, and I think I put it out there to make it happen. So I know Councilman Rojas, had she been on the council at that time, would have voted also. So thank you very much, and let's move on to the next item.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for on the next item.
It's been moved and properly second. Please cast your vote.
Madam Mayor, it's unanimous. The motion carries.
Madam City Clerk, or we report the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. It carries, Madam Mayor. It's unanimous.
Okay. Consent items number 16 through 33.
Motion to approve consent calendar. Second.
Would anyone like to pull an item? Item number 33, MPT.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, item number 21, there's just a correction that needs to be made on the floor. Staff has already provided you that correction. It's a one-word change. Yes, thank you.
Do you want to pull it? So you're going to make the change?
We don't necessarily need to pull it, but when we come to the item, we just wanted to make it identify that it's going to be a correction, so that you're aware.
Item number 21 has a correction. Do you want to say what it is?
Chair, yes, ma'am. Thank you. The correction is just identifying that the item listed states a non-exempt position, and it's actually an exempt position. So the language was incorrect. And that's, it's the job description.
So, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Under proper parliamentary procedure, I'll make a motion as a friendly amendment to approve the consent calendar minus what you're having pulled off with the correction of the city manager. Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any further discussion? All in favor, or cast your votes. I mean, cast your votes.
Madam Mayor, the vote is unanimous. The motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 33 was a pull by our MPT.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem for pulling this item. I know this is, this particular item is definitely something that has been discussed on multiple occasions. I know I've gotten a number of either complaints, concerns, comments in reference to, similar to what we just heard earlier from a resident, about the streets and how, even, Madam Mayor, you mentioned that the city of Carson used to have the best streets in the South Bay. And so that is a, definitely a dedicated project that we took to heart. Part of myself and my staff, excuse me, when we went to look for the new director of public works was someone who was driven and was able to galvanize the staff and team to get this project moving. And so I'm happy to share with you tonight, in addition to the laborious work and the efforts of both the city council as well as our finance department to procure the funding, also being able to bring in someone, again, that can galvanize the team. Before you is this item in reference to the annual pavement maintenance program, better known as the Streets Project, to be able to support and to fix your streets. And so at this time, I'll have a brief presentation given to you by our director of public works, who is on, as he has mentioned, Mr. Rogers is going into month number eight, known as New Beginnings, and so.
Promises made, promises kept.
Yes, so I'm going to allow him to share this exciting news for your city residents going and attacking your streets.
Oh, wait a minute. You passed your probation, huh? Congratulations, six months.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for that introduction. Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, I wanted to offer this opportunity with you. This has been my driving force. When I arrived, there was some mandates set before me. And due to the support, not only the city manager, but the assistant city manager, my direct line of supervision, allowing me to be creative so I could accomplish the goal that was set before me, which was to get the streets paved in this city of Carson. I have to say, it was no small undertaking, but due to the support of the senior staff members, the finance department, even the parks department director, I think we put something together that will be beneficial to the residents of the city of Carson. I think it's a win for everybody involved. So I have a small presentation of what that looks like, and then I'll be prepared to take any questions that you have. So we're calling this our annual pavement maintenance program. And the annual pavement maintenance program was established to improve the city's roadway conditions at an accelerated rate. The city's roadway infrastructure is approximately 245 centerline miles. While recent infrastructure improvements have promoted sustainable and active modes of transportation, walking, cycling, public transit, ongoing trends still show that vehicles remain a priority mode of transportation. Hence, we need to get our streets taken care of. So how we're going to do this is what we went about doing was finding streets that... Well, let me back up a little bit. The first thing that was presented to council, if you remember, was a change to the ordinance. And that was to allow maintenance to include a depth up to two inches of pulling off the top layer of pavement and adding that before. Prior to that, it was only an inch. Prior to that, it was only an inch, uh, in depth of asphalt that could be removed to still be considered maintenance. So your approval of that ordinance change was huge and allowed us to move forward with this. So what we did was we, uh, developed a system where we took at least, uh, I think one, one area has eight, but that was just due to the index. So we use a pavement management index to, to find out which streets are somewhat the worst streets that we can attack in each district. And in each district, we found those streets, they're, they're named up there. And unfortunately, we pulled up the wrong slide as we were, uh, going through. There were two programs, and I'll back up to that. So District One, you see a list of streets, it's gonna be ten. District Two, District Three, and District Four. Why we separated that is because the other task was to have these streets paved, one vendor in each district, so that all districts were simultaneously being taken care of and that there were no stoppages in the workload. We did bid it for four districts, four separate RFPs, and we came back with two vendors. One vendor was lowest bid in one districts, one, three, and four. There was another vendor that was lowest bid in District Two. So when the program moves forward, you will see two vendors, um, but we did use the lowest bid process, alright? So when they went out and bid on the streets, they bid their best, and that's how the, they were successful in, uh, being awarded the bid. What's gonna happen this particular fiscal year is each district will receive, if you approve it, two million dollars per district to attack these streets. Going forward, it'd be three million per district. Each vendor has to work simultaneously and move forward in the, in the, uh, manner that Public Works puts forth. How we're going to attack this is we, as Public Works Department, will issue the streets to the vendors. They will not go out and pick them on their own. We have a systematic approach. We have a PMP, a Pavement Management Handbook, that we're gonna use to pull the streets out and systematically go through. So we have, we're starting off with ten this year, um, and we're gonna be based off of a budget. So whatever three million gets us for the next year, that's how many streets we're gonna pave. If it's five, it's five, depending on the, you gotta remember, it's depending on the, uh, condition of the street. If it's twenty, we'll pave twenty. So that's how we're gonna move it forward. Uh, and then, this is the summary. So we're awarding four contracts for pavement maintenance, one per council district, two millions, two million dollars per district for the first year, with subsequent years at three million per district. Streets are prioritized based on pavement condition index and the grading of the pavement. Implementation is expected early twenty-twenty-four. And that's my...
Did you want me to go back?
MPT.
Uh, this is wonderful news. This is wonderful news. Can you turn my mic up so I won't have to put my lips on it? This is, uh, incredible news, uh, of cleaning up our districts. Uh, I have a few concerns, um, particularly in District One. When I get, uh, when people speak to me about District One, they, they talk about how we forget Galaxy West and Centerview. Uh, none of these streets represent any of this Galaxy West or Centerview area over here. So I wanna see if we can get something simultaneously going on all at the same time, uh, in our district, whether we have to do three in this area, two in that area.
Galaxy West and...
Centerview. And, uh, I'm, I'm only, I'm only talking about District One right now, so I talked to Jimmy over there. We need to get, uh, also weekly updates to watch the progress of the project. Or, uh, you know, this is a victory for every resident, and I, I believe that. And we want to notify our residents to make sure the project is managed that will benefit our residents.
May, may I just say? So part of, part of what's gonna happen is the next council meeting, hopefully that you will approve, is additional construction inspectors and additional project managers. There will be, will be specially, you know, designated project managers and construction inspectors to ensure that this particular project is moving forward. So there will be no oversight. There will be designated project manager and construction inspectors on this particular project. That will report probably directly to me or my direct assistant.
Great. Incredible. I think, like I said, it's a win-win for, uh, every community, every district, Carson as a whole. We appreciate you going to work, uh, in eight months. I understand you achieve in every field of human endeavor, I understand that. But I just want to make sure our residents know, and, uh, as we've all indicated, this is a priority for us. Uh, Carson had, when I grew up, Carson had incredible streets. Uh, and we want people to be able to drive from one area to the other area and not differentiate, oh, this is this part of Carson, that. We just want it to be all Carson. You go to different other communities, you can recognize the continuity in the community. Uh, so I'm excited about that, and I think I'm preaching to a choir member, as they say. Like you're preaching to the choir. You've been here eight months, got the ball up and rolling. Uh, so we're incredibly excited. As the mayor said, we couldn't do it without money. So we've been, we've been pinching together, uh, but this time, we have this, these reserves, and we're excited to spend the reserves on our, uh, our, our infrastructure that will bring home values up, uh, people, I mean, they're selling a home over in Carson at one-point-one million dollars. Super excited about it, and it's supposed to close in the next couple of weeks. So that just lets you know the investments that are happening in Carson, that if people are coming and buying homes for one-point-one million dollars, uh, this is incredible. But we gotta have the streets to match one-point-one million dollar homes.
Yes, sir.
And we appreciate you for doing that.
Thank you.
Madam.
Just a second. Our resident, uh, I want to make sure that we hit some, the streets that she was talking about, uh, during her presentation also, if they're included, so you guys can kinda touch bases afterwards if you want to. My other question is, uh, why is it just two million? We didn't put any limitations on the two million. Is there something I missed?
You're right, yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. So really, the, the aspect of two million is because we're already halfway into the fiscal year. So we know that we're not gonna utilize three million, um, before the new fiscal year comes, comes to a head. The work is gonna start early next year. Uh, we know we're kinda coming into the rainy, rainy season, so there's gonna probably be some in-and-out delay, but it's not gonna stop from, uh, both of our contractors on the streets in, in each of the, of your districts. Also, we're gonna make sure that there is, uh, a posting of all the streets that will be worked on. So that's gonna be an effort on our part, not just putting it on the city's website, but utilizing our PIO department to blanket the city, letting them know these are the streets that are gonna be working on. So each district is in anticipation for the streets that's gonna be affected with ulterior routes to utilize while streets are being, uh, being worked on. So we do realize it's gonna be an inconvenience for residents because of the work, but it's much needed, and we believe that we have a plan in place, um, as the director was speaking, that this is gonna be collaborative effort where both, um, contractors will be working together at all four districts, 'cause it's happening all simultaneously, at the same time rerouting the standard traffic as well as residents, so they know how to get to and from where they need to go while work is being done on their specific street. Another aspect I do want to mention, uh, is the financial component, since you mentioned about the two million. This is the, um, because of the creative way that this is being presented as a maintenance project versus a CIP project, this is going to ultimately take us out of a structurally balanced budget, because we're gonna have to, we didn't budget for this, for this year, so we're gonna have to borrow from the reserve. Ultimately, the money was still gonna come from the reserve, it's just it's gonna count against our coffers on the maintenance side, so though we won't be structurally balanced, um, which would've been four years in a row, but we will be balanced, which will be four years in a row. And I believe, Madam Mayor, your directive, as well as the council, was this is what the money was for. And so we took that, uh, action and directive from you, and this is why we're presenting it in this particular manner.
Well, I appreciate it, because, uh, I didn't want to be accused of having a million-dollar budget at one point. How much is it, a hundred and what? Hundred and who? Hundred and eight? Hundred and eight versus twenty, um, budget, and not getting our streets, uh, complete. So structurally, nobody knows what a structurally balanced budget is in the first place. All they want to know is that my streets are being taken care of. Okay, so I want to thank you, um...
Yes, ma'am.
For that, and also, um, that answered my question about two million. My quote, my statement to you is if, at some point, you get where you need more than two million, because we have a hot season, please bring it back, because we want the project to move forward. And that's what the residents pass, that UUT, the tax on the oil refineries, the first time in the history of the city, that we tax the oil refiners. And, uh, the, uh, what was the other budget? Uh, the, um, tax?
Sales tax.
Sales tax, okay?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
You know, some people didn't even want to pass it, but it passed, our residents passed it, seventy-five percent. So they want their streets done. They don't want to hear about, we have a hundred million, twenty million, eight million dollar surplus, and our streets are terrible. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, Councilman Hicks, you have a statement?
Yeah, just had a quick question to the staff. Now that we, if it's approved, that we are gonna move forward to all the districts with the paving of the streets, the current CIP that we have in place, will this be affected or will this be a addition to that? So I just want the residents to know that you could see more work being done than what you're just saying this evening.
Excellent question, and I was just gonna address that, so you read my mind. Um, this is not going to stop the current CIP program, that's gonna still move forward. Hence, that's where all the coordination's gonna have to come from, because we're not gonna stop anything, but we as staff have to get together and make sure that we're, uh, being transparent, guiding the residents through it. The one, the one thing I want to stress, though, is because we are using the PCI, the Pavement Condition Index, one street may be getting paved, and we may miss a person's street due to that, because we want to stick to a system that, that is, uh, consistent. It does not mean that that other street is not going to get done at some point. So, um, it's not a, we're going down the neighborhood, picking streets and going forward. Some streets are actually very still, very, very good condition, so we may not have to use that level of treatment on that particular street. So I, I just want to be clear on that, 'cause I know that you're gonna call me, Councilman Hicks, so I...
You know that. My, my other, my other question, um, Madam Mayor, don't mind. When you do miss that street in that neighborhood, um, you know where I'm going. And they go down the street, well, my street is nice and black, it's beautiful, and I come over here, may not have a pothole, but it's gray. Why, my street can't look black like everybody else's street? I'm just letting you know, this is what they think when you drive in, in the city. And so why can that, that happen?
Black looks new, it looks nice.
Be, because of the condition of the streets that were used in the PCI. So the street that's gray is, is used slurry, right? We all know what slurry is. So slurry is just a portion of, uh, a maintenance program to maintain streets, right? So if a street has been slurried, it, it means that it still has a lot of useful life left in it. Whereas one that we're going to pick using the pavement index may be at, let's say, fifty percent, um, deteriorated. So we're gonna take care of that fifty percent, bring it up to a hundred percent, and then we'll go back and take care of the streets that may be slurred. Because the task to me was to pave every street in the city. That's what the council directed.
Yeah.
City manager has made sure that I was aware of that. So it's just a systematic approach. In order to get the best bang, the most efficiency out of what we're trying to do, we have to approach it methodically and systematically according to what the science says, and that's all we're doing.
That sounds good, but I still want my street paved. I'm just, this, this is what, what I'm giving you is what I get.
Yes, I'm prepared.
I hear what you just told me, but I want my street paved.
I, I totally understand, that, that's common for what the work that we do.
Okay. Thank you. Arlington, uh, great presentation. Technical question, but only a general answer is what I'm looking for. Uh, there's a number of streets that are, uh, full of cracks, but there's no potholes. So, um, from what I, I understand from Public Works Engineers, the tracks are, um, you know, a prelude, you know, the cracks are gonna be potholes because of the, the rainwater that's gonna go through, and then the heavy vehicles like, uh, trash trucks or, and street sweeping vehicles, pretty heavy, uh, coming over that, uh, piece of cracked asphalt with water underneath of it. Uh, that's how a pothole seems to form. So when you see the streets that are, have a lot of cracks, or what is that on the, uh, the index that you're referring to? How does that fall into the index?
It, it would depend. It would have to be someone go out and measure it and do some samples and take an eye survey on that. I don't think there's a, I don't have a general answer as to this level would equal that. What we would do in the short term for a street like that is probably do some crack sealing or whatever, but I am speaking in general terms, having not looked at that specific location.
Yeah, the crack sealing, when you have the, the black squiggly lines?
Yes.
Uh, that's not too attractive, uh, but I understand the engineering purpose of those sealants being put in there. But, um, so if the street actually has potholes, that's gonna put it into a different category, is that correct?
It could, yes.
Could, or the potholes might just be filled with asphalt?
So I'm understanding you'd ask me two separate questions. The first question is, where would that type of deterioration fit within the PCI, right?
Yes, the PCI I'm referring to.
Correct. That would take, um, me to go out and take a look at it specifically, what you're talking about, because there is no, uh, one-size-fits-all when it comes to PCI.
Okay.
The second question, what I hear you asking me is, would we pave that street? If I'm understanding how you're directing the question.
Well, I understand we're gonna pave, we're gonna pave every street in the city.
My answer was gonna be yes to that.
It's gonna be, uh, prioritized, uh, naturally.
We would prioritize it. The city has already approved and paid for a pavement, uh, management handbook that I have, that I use, and that's what we're currently using. Now, if we're out there and it has deteriorated a little bit further than what it's saying in the PCI, we will definitely wrap that into what we're trying to do. We are not trying to avoid any streets whatsoever, but we do want to make a systematic approach to this so we can get through it methodically and as quickly as we possibly can.
Great. Okay, uh, that's the only questions I have. I did send you a text message on a typo on the, on the screen.
Okay.
You'll see it.
All right, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Arlington, for all your hard work in eight months, right? Congratulations.
Thank you.
That just proves that it doesn't take a couple of decades to learn how to be a team. It actually can do it, and you did it in eight months. So thank you for your transparency, your consistency, and your teamwork.
Thank you.
And proud to have you here with us and, uh, continue the great work.
And, and you, you said me, but it was, uh, it was my team, it was the city manager, it was a lot of moving parts that got it. So I don't, I don't want to stand here and take all the credit for that.
Uh, no, and again, it's all about teamwork, and like I said, and you did it in eight months, and working as a team, and, and this is why we're in the position we're in, and...
Thank you.
And thank you for, for putting us all together and working together. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
While you're on the hot seat, uh, are we having the same approach with these? Are the medians going in our trees? Because we've been getting the trees, are we using that same approach? I know we have two people for the median, what, what did I say? Okay.
So...
I saw a little, uh, some of the medians had a little haircut, you know, last time.
Yeah, they got, they got a little edge up. Um, so in the medians right now, uh, we had a conversation, uh, leadership and myself, uh, we're getting ready to get into the rainy season.
Mm-hmm.
And there's still some work that needs to be done in the, in the median. So right now, what we're doing is putting mulch over areas where that can happen. The reason we're doing that is to, to decrease the weed growth, so that we can get through the rainy season, start planning now in the winter season to what we want our medians to start looking like, and then start, uh, executing on that plan come spring, summer, in that area, once it's approved. Um, as you know, you all approved that we have two median contractors at this point, and they're, again, systematically working through the system. And I have to admit that the medians are starting to look a lot better than when I first got here, and the city manager told me it was my responsibility, so... They were about three feet high, I think, at that point. I think they were, that's how I met Councilmember Hicks. Um, and the second thing is the trees. So we do have a tree contractor, West Coast Arborists, who does most of the, uh, tree trimming in Southern California. And, uh, we are actively looking at that to see. One thing I'd like to point out with the trees is, is, uh, something that we've been sharing with residents, is that all trees, um, don't necessarily have to be trimmed as regular as other trees. So when West Coast comes in, they do have an arborist, and they do systematically look at these trees. Some need to be more, some need to be less, just depending on the species. But I understand the will of the council is to have every single tree trimmed all the time. And, uh, we are actively putting those schedules, street sweeping, tree trimming, all the maintenance schedules, on the website. Uh, I've been working with the, uh, my team has been working with the IT's director's team to make sure that we're getting all those things done. So there's a lot of things happening in the... So there's a lot of things happening in the background, changing over the website, a new webpage, and then putting all that stuff together.
Does our council aides, do they have access to know where these trees are being trimmed? Because I've found out, I would like them to know, especially from me, as to where they're being trimmed, so we can, when we're in your respective districts.
We get the calls.
You'll get the calls, you can say, "Hey, this is the schedule," or "It's been trimmed." And sometime, I sent a letter out, and they said, "Mayor, my tree hasn't been trimmed." So I just like, you know, we want to tighten that up a little bit to make sure that you guys have the information that you need in your districts. Okay, my other question.
One other question.
Question, too, so.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, it's still my turn. Graffiti.
I didn't say it. So graffiti, we are moving forward with graffiti. One of the things that we, that has just taken place, thanks to the council, you approved, LA County Conservation Corps, that's going to come in and take care of graffiti and right-of-way abatement in our Caltrans areas and in our city right-of-way. So that's one element to this. And we are actively working to bring in some graffiti abatement that is moving forward as we speak. So we are not, we're not asleep. LA County Conservation Corps is sort of a stopgap measure to fulfill the direction that you gave me the last time I stood up here.
Thank you, EBT.
Madam Mayor, I just didn't want to, I didn't want to steal my thunder tonight. So I'd like to make this motion to award a construction contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder of RJ Noble Company for the annual paving maintenance at District One for a three-year term in the amount of eight million, with the option to extend two additional one-year terms. Award a construction contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, All American Asphalt for the annual paving maintenance at District Two for a three-year term in the amount of eight million, with the option to extend for two additional one-year terms. Award a construction contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, RJ Noble Company for the annual pavement maintenance at District Three for a three-year term in the amount of eight million, with the option to extend for two additional one-year terms. Award a construction contract to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, RJ Noble Company for the annual paving maintenance at District Four for a three-year term in the amount of eight million, with the option to extend for two additional one-year terms. Authorize the mayor to execute all four maintenance contracts following approval as to form by the city attorney and waive further reading and adopt Resolution Number 23-160, a resolution of the City of Carson, City Council, amending the fiscal year 2023-24 budget in the general fund and special funds.
Right, second.
Everybody wants a second, huh? That's why I wanted to be first.
Streets fixed.
I'll take the prerogative of the chair, I'll second it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Under discussion of the motion?
Yes.
Since our Public Works Director brought up the medians. I brought this up at another council meeting previous to this tonight. Don't want to forget, the sanitation district did a three-year project on Figueroa Street and really destroyed the beautiful landscaping that we had. So they, I understand, are responsible for putting it back the way they found it before they piled equipment and lumber and steel on top of all these nice plants that we had. So I want to be sure that the taxpayers of Carson are not having to pay for that when we have the opportunity to require that the sand district put it back the way it is. That's Figueroa Street.
I just spoke with the city engineer, and he is all over that. He said they just had a meeting, and he is well aware of it, and he's working on it as we speak.
I'm glad to hear that, thank you.
If I can also add to, not necessarily just the median project, but Gilbert isn't a man of many words, but I did want to just recognize his work. He also has a heavy load coming up before him as a city engineer, so I wanted to thank Gilbert Marquez for all the things that he's been doing for the city and continue to do.
He can handle it. Let's give him a hand for that.
Sure, no, absolutely.
Go Gilbert!
And then I also want to just recognize our operations manager for Public Works there, Raymond Velasco, he snuck in in the back. He also is a man of few words, but he's been pushing, he's the one that's been pushing in the back of Arlington every time he begins to take a slower step. If he tries to, he keeps him in pace. So, you know, actually, the three of them have been working simultaneously as well, just as well to get this project moving forward, and as Rahada's doing. A lot of acrobatics along with Dr. Lennox, who's been overseeing the department, you know, so wonderfully. So just wanted to make mention of that.
Raymond gets applause as well, right?
Madam Mayor, just quick, with the medians, there are some streetlights that are still out. So the city's dark, the time has changed, it gets darker sooner, and just really need to look at making sure all of the streetlights in the city are working for the safety of the residents.
Good idea.
Thank you, we'll definitely keep that out.
Mr. City Manager. One of the other pieces to this that will be coming before you will be a citywide sidewalk pavement plan. It's under the same idea of what you just approved, but it will deal specifically with sidewalks. I'm sorry? Oh.
We call for it, they holding up the progress.
We have voted.
Madam Mayor, please call, oh.
I just heard everybody's.
Call for the vote. Can we call for the vote?
Some of us voted already, we're waiting for you, Cedric. There we go.
Madam Mayor, the vote is unanimous, the motion carries.
To Arlington Rogers.
So, back to the sidewalks, because that's what I do, we keep moving, got to keep working. So it'll be the same concept as what we're doing. We will bid, we will bid it out, citywide, get the contracts in motion, it will move forward, get rid of all the deferred maintenance, the pitches, the tripping hazards, and all of that. So that will be coming forward pretty soon. But I wanted to point out, Mr. Velasco, because before I could bring it here, I believe in iron sharpens iron, so I try to surround myself with people that will push back. I don't like yes people, and Raymond is very good at that. In a very intelligent and fiscally smart way, he pushed every single button to make sure that when we presented this to you all, that there would be no gaps in it, and it would be seamless. So I just want to publicly thank you, Mr. Velasco, for all your pushback and making sure that I did my homework.
Before that, that made our day. Thank you very much. The next is item number thirty-four.
Yes, ma'am, your CCBs.
Yes. Item number, let's see. Veterans Affairs Commission, I'd like to move up Al CA from the alternate to the vacant position.
Madam Mayor, I didn't catch the name, can you repeat it?
Al CA, S-E-A-Y, from alternate number two to the vacant position.
Alt-two to vacant.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to ratify your appointment.
I have one more, okay, thank you.
You have more?
I have one more, where is he?
I'll do them together.
I'll do them together. Well, let's ratify that one, I can't find the other one, I had circled it. So that's my motion.
So I'll make a motion to ratify the mayor's appointment.
It's been moved improperly second. Oh, wait, and, let's see. Please cash your vote.
The motion is unanimous, Madam Mayor, it carries.
Thank you. Next is memorial adjournments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, these are the names that I received. Norwood Clark Senior, Luis Vasquez Romero, John Bear Junior, Quinn Jackson, Robert Richardson, Estrella Bumacot.
Robert Richardson was our former landscaping building maintenance superintendent, so we need to acknowledge his family. He worked for the city for years. Do we have his homegoing ceremony? Estrella Bumacot was a former, was one of our commissioners also, so we need to recognize her. Yes, she passed Sunday, I believe. So she's a commissioner. Would anyone like it? Does anyone have any names to add? Thank you. So let's make sure we get some kind of acknowledgement from the city for those two. All Communications for items not listed on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I do have a few speaker cards this evening. We also did receive several photos regarding a speaker card, and those reported to your staff over the last couple of weeks. So I can hand these to you.
You can read them.
Okay. Our first speaker is Monica Vasquez.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, Monica.
Hello. Okay, let me just read, because I'll forget what I'm allowed to say.
Monica, you'll have three minutes.
Sure, thank you. Okay, good evening, Carson City Council members, my name is Monica. I'm here tonight just to speak on the issue of graffiti. I know we talked about it right now. Excuse me, I would just like to thank the city leadership for recently making some efforts in the graffiti issue, but more work is needed. I would like to request graffiti removal to continue to be a top priority. The large graffiti areas along the four or five South Freeway continue to be a problem in our city. I would like to ask the city council to paint over the larch wall behind the CHP weight station again and require the owners of that wall to keep the graffiti off. Also, the graffiti that runs along the four or five freeway from the Wilmington on-ramp to the Alameda off-ramp continues to be a problem. Please direct your attention to those specific areas, thank you. Once you're coming out of the freeway, it not beautifies our city.
It does not.
Yes.
And as you go up the one-ten also, before you get off on. So I know that we've been bringing that up over and over, there's a process we have to go through. I know we talked about with the Evolve, the ones you're talking about is about the CHP, the Evolve. The staff is reaching out to see how we can address that, because it's, they painted it, I think, we painted it three times already, two or three times, so we're going to have to have a paintbrush out there, but it is an eyesore, it doesn't look good in our city.
It does not.
So we hear you, we've had a couple of residents that come down and express their concern, and as soon as we paint it, it looks like it gets larger. But they're going to be working with the Evolve, am I correct? To see if we can get some kind of teamwork going.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for staying, I wish I'd known you were here earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the next person is Rich Chan.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members, and to everyone inside this building. I'm under District Two, and I just want to raise two concerns. First one is short-term rentals within the City of Carson. I spoke with business license with planning and public safety, and they mentioned that it's not allowed here, short-term rentals. But when you go to Airbnb rentals, they show a lot of Airbnbs in the City of Carson. As an example, in our apartment, anytime a tenant moves out, they renovate the building and it becomes an Airbnb. And I was hoping we can have like a specific, like law or to enforce it. That would be great, if we can enforce it. And another concern also is maybe if we can have signs posted in our city, like no, say no to panhandling, similar to City of Newport Beach, so we can discourage homeless people, and we can direct them to agencies that can help them. And that's all.
Thank you for coming out. As it relates to the Airbnb, I think our city attorney, correct me, madam, we're looking into the short-term rentals, trying to come up with a plan of action for that.
Okay.
Because you are not the only one that has expressed concern, so we will be addressing that.
Yes.
As the panhandlers are concerned selling on the sidewalks and all that, she is working on an ordinance or something to say that in certain areas, there it is not allowed. But as you know, the law passed that says that we cannot.
Man it. Oh.
Mandate it throughout the city. But there are certain areas where you can restrict the sales. So we are on the same page, we just need to be strategic about how we're going to implement.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Craig Sheets. Hi, Craig.
How you doing tonight?
Good.
You guys all got my emails several times on a scintillation device. This little counter here does well for radioactive material. And I guarantee, if you look at all the containers that I sent you, they're stacked high. I don't know how they're checking them when they're sitting there on our coastlines, okay? So this is every authority port, is what they call them. Customs is not checking them, they're using X-ray machines as well. Carson City, you have the largest, let me get it here for you. These are oil refineries, chemical plants. If one of these slide through in a false tool shed, tool bin, you know, sitting on an oil refinery, or I think I looked you guys up, you got three-hundred-and-sixty-five gallons of toxic kaboom. If there's one of those on there, we're done. And you know what the worst part is? Is if it contaminates, again, the water. Every one of us in this room, evil, good, let's not judge. You know, I'm not perfect, but if we don't have water, we don't live. Trees don't live, animals don't live. Do we all agree on that? Water's number one. Would everybody agree on that with me? This is what I'm fighting for, and I'm working hard on it. Second of all, how much time do I got left? Enough.
One minute and nineteen seconds.
Yeah, here's another one, for the ocean. Offshore oil plants, anybody seen that movie, Deep Horizon? I don't think that was faulty of the device or the machinery. Out there on there is weapons, also labs. I think a lab went bad, and again, back to the container with the nuclear device on it. Imagine, all these dots I sent you are oil, offshore oil wells on the Gulf Coast. If that goes off, oil and radiation, it'll spread into every ocean. We will never have rain or snow. We need water, folks, that's it. We don't need more concrete, we don't need more freeways, we don't need more ordinance for parks and toilets. We need to watch out for water, big time. Thank for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor, our last speaker card is Kim Cortado. I did want to mention, while Kim is on her way up, we did receive a public comment from SQ, South Coast AQMD, and I made sure that this is forwarded to your staff as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council staff, Kim Cortado, Park and Recreation Commissioner. Upcoming events for the city of Carson, this Saturday, November 11th, we are doing our Veterans Day celebration at Veterans Park at 10:00 a.m. November 18th, the grand opening of the dedicated pickleball courts at Hemingway Park will be on November 18th at 10:00 a.m. December 7th, we are doing the tree lighting ceremony at the Carson Event Center at 6:00 p.m. December 8th is Community Night Out at Veterans Park. That will be at 6:00 p.m. where the community come out, play basketball, stuff like that. December 9th is the Winter Fest that will also be at Veterans Park, Veteran Sports Complex from 12 to 4:00 p.m. We just did our Halloween celebration on Halloween at the event center and it was a very good turnout this year, lots of kids came out, had a great time, even our superintendent dressed up as somebody from Super Mario. Don't remember, I can't remember what he was, he wasn't Mario though. Luigi, thank, no, he wasn't.
He wasn't Luigi either.
Yeah, thank you. And he played, he did very well in his costume. And we, as always, staff goes above and beyond, you know, putting events together for the city. Now switching over to the YMCA, I just, you know, on behalf of the YMCA, I wanna thank the city, staff, everybody who works at the community center, under Bobby, under Public Works. You know, as the mayor says, it takes a village and a lot of times it takes a village to, you know, feed seniors. Our grab and go for the YMCA has come back. It is now every Friday, except for this Friday, we are closed, so November 17th, grab and go at the Carson Event Center from 12 to 1:30, you just drive through, you get seven meals and you drive off. But on, you know, behalf of the YMCA, we wanna say thank you to the city of Carson for letting us provide services to the seniors here for 35 years. So thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, Kim. Next is council members request to add items to future agendas.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, I brought this up when you were absent for one of the council meetings and the staff has forwarded to the city attorney's office, I believe. His request for an ordinance similar to the city of Pico Rivera to curtail street takeovers by people who wanna put on these exhibitions of, you know, running donuts and having races illegally in the streets and so that'll be brought forward by the city attorney's office and the city manager's office when they are ready. Thank you.
Thank you. All communications, council members.
Madam Mayor, I did have an item.
An item?
Yeah, for the staff to bring back a report, I think the clerk talked about South Coast AQMD. I think, was that a report that was issued or a statement? My request to staff, I need for them to come or provide us with an updated report on the air quality here in the city. There's been many calls I've received of which MPT talked about earlier of gas odors emitting, heavy methane smell as well as sulfur in the air many times around about 3, 4 o'clock in the morning. It's really heavy around that time. It permeates through the house. At 3 o'clock in the morning, so there is something that's being released. I don't know which refinery or what organization in our city is doing sneak releases late night, thinking no one's gonna smell it, but it's being recognized. So for them to come back and if they did put fence line monitoring systems in, I don't think it's doing what it's supposed to do, so they need to come back and give us a report on what needs to be done.
Thank you, Councilman Hicks, I may, Madam Mayor, for that, we just actually got an update from South Coast AQMD in regards to the parter property. They had been monitoring that one for over a year and so they were removing that actual device to test the air quality because it's been entrapped and closed based on the email we just received from Ms. O'Malley from AQMD. But because we were actually in, just in contact with her just here about an hour ago, we'll go ahead and send that email over advising the area and so we'll say within District 1 and District 3 is where the heavy concentration of smell has been in the evening. I haven't had any other reports, but we'll ensure, since we're in contact with them, letting them know about that. But that's good to know because they're trying to release themselves from this parter aspect, which I asked them why would they release it and I had her place it in email because I said, I believe our council has been real concerned about our air quality, in particular, that was close to an elementary school if you recall, and so I asked them that they would not release that, but they said they had to remove it because there's no longer any readings on the device over the past year. So that's, that was their response, but I can go ahead and respond to them, in particular saying District 1 and District 3 has been receiving these sulfur type smells in the middle of the, in the middle of the night and have them to come do their monitoring in the area and so if there's any other council member who is experiencing that, well, be sure to address it as well if need be.
Okay.
I was just gonna echo Councilmember Hicks, the odor was heavy at like 3 o'clock in the morning. I was, I woke up like gagging, I thought something that was leaking in the house. Even called the gas company out and the gas company said, the gas company said it was an odor in the air. And I'm like, we haven't heard about an odor in the air, so I think they should, as I always point out, if this was Newport Beach, the Hyperion Oil Spill, they would have that reverse technology, they can text, you know, about missing people. They certainly can text about air quality. So let's hold our feet to AQMD, put their feet to the fire. I don't wanna, I just wanted to.
MPT, was it like a natural gas odor or something different?
Yeah, I just smelled like gas coming, permeating through my house and I thought it was something. And then I was like, oh, okay, maybe it's not, walked around, checked it out. Then that morning I left, came back and like gas, when I walked in the house, it felt like it hit me in the face. So I immediately called the gas company and the gas company came out and checked, but as they shared, they said, you aren't the only one who has reported gas. We've been running to people's houses because everybody's been smelling this gas.
Leaking from somewhere, yeah.
Can I give a request now, Madam Mayor?
Hmm, maybe. Yes.
So I don't, I don't have like a council request, I just kinda have a personal request and I hope I'm not infringing on the mayor, but I wanna applaud your incredible strength tonight to come sit and serve the people. It just speaks of the heart, the nature that you have in leading Carson and how you take pride in leading a city. As you are preparing for the homegoing of your grandson between tomorrow and the next day, my request is for our residents to keep you and your family in prayer. And it's a tough season for you and I applaud your strength and your tenacity and still trying to lift our community up all at the same time. But we do wanna let you know, we as a city, we have you, we got you covered. There is a public viewing tomorrow at the Central Baptist Church at 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. All are welcome, as the mayor has said, and to the homegoing service that will take place on Thursday, November 8th. The viewing will be from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. and the service begins at 11:00 a.m. And it will be at Love and Unity Christian Fellowship at 1840 South Wilmington Avenue on the borderline of Carson and Compton. And if you have expressions of sympathy, you can send them to Keisha at 1854 East Cashden Street in Carson, 90746. And if you have questions, you can call our public information office at extension 1741. But Mayor, we wanna let you know that we're rallying around your family and your extended family of 98,000 residents are praying for you. And so my request is that we continue to lift our mayor up in prayer and as she has displayed this incredible strength tonight to come to a council meeting while she's going through some personal challenges herself, I wanna applaud you and it just speaks of the tenacity and how sold out you are for your residents. Thank you.
I guess you guys wanted to make me cry tonight. No, I, thank you, MPT. Arlene? Did you have something? We're on all communications. We've done that already.
No, we're good.
Okay, I just wanna thank the city.
Thank the city. You guys have been phenomenal. And when we talk about community and family, you guys have demonstrated that. From the day that you got the message, every day, to all the businesses that have come out. I mean, you guys have been feeding me for three weeks, which is, you know, it's unheard of, but the support, I said, oh, these folks kinda like me. I guess they do, but I just wanna let you know how much I appreciate what you've done, the support you've given me. It's made us stronger. And everybody knows how I feel about my grand boys. I tell everybody, had I known that I could love them more than my children, I would have had them first. Because they were the moon and the sun, they are the moon and the sun for me. But I loved him and God loved him more. And yes, we will miss him and I thank you, MPT, for that. But, you know, at the end of the day, I love this city also. And I thought, I think it was good for you guys to see me back sitting here instead of wondering where I was and how I was doing. So I made a commitment, I made a commitment when I was elected to serve this city to the best of my abilities. And there were gonna come times and challenges and this is one of my biggest challenges that I've had to face. And, but I'm for the task, you know, and at the end of the day, he's resting and I'm still your mayor and I want you to see that because I didn't realize what it meant to the city employees for me to come back and sit in this chair and say that I'm okay. And I am okay, we're gonna survive, we're gonna get through this. But it's gonna be a challenge for my daughter, so keep her up in prayer. This was her only child and I'm gonna be there for her and I just appreciate, you guys don't know how much I appreciate you. It became, and all the ministers that have been to my home, I think one day there was six in my, in her house. It just became overwhelming for her, but she understands the love. Its friends are flying in from all over. So we're gonna lay him to rest on Thursday at Love and Unity. You know, if you can come out, fine, if not, you've done, you've done more than I expected to my colleagues, the four of you sitting here, thank you so much. Arlene, my MPT here and Councilman Hicks, you guys are just awesome. Have lifted me up. But the business of the city of Carson must go on, so with that, I'm gonna say on November 19th, I'm having a turkey giveaway. Our annual turkey giveaway is at the South Bay Pavilion. We'll be giving away a thousand turkeys in partnership with Delta Sigma Theta and a simulant, Loenthal, our simulant, he's gonna be coming out, so invite, you must be a Carson resident to take part in that. And, let's see, to our city manager, the Dominguez Channel, we have not had a report on that lately. It's, I think it's about time, we should not let that fall through the cracks because I know there are some lawsuits out there that need to be addressed and I'd just like a report from LA County Public Works as to where we are. I don't want them to forget about the little city of Carson, I know there was some funding that Prologix, I know we had sent in a letter requesting payment. And update on our animal control officer? And the homeless task force, could you bring them before the city council to let us know statistics, update of what they may have? And that's about it for me for tonight. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, without any further comments, this council meeting is adjourned. Okay, without any further comments, this council meeting is adjourned.